The Gulf of Mexico by going back up through all of the NPS permit dischargers. And realistically, yeah, we are going to see some discharge or some, some removal of it through the, through the biological process at the wastewater treatment plant. There's probably somewhere, you know, if, if you look at some of the, the data that's been provided by the US EPA, there's a removal efficiency of about eighty, eighty percent in between sixty and ninety percent. The average is somewhere in the eighty percent range. And typically what happens is that it comes out with your sludge, the material gets land applied onto a farm field, the farm field is subject to a rain, it goes to a creek, and so on and so forth. So the idea here is to remove it at the source so that you don't ever give it the opportunity to be introduced into the water stream itself or into the watershed. So, you know, mercury is, as well as many of the other metals that we're going to see in the future. The technology has gotten much better since the seventies. We see things now at the part per trillion range. That's exactly what we're seeing for mercury. Our current limit that we see in our permit, we do have a limit in our permit now for mercury. It leans on the state water quality standard, which is five parts per billion. We meet that. That's not a problem. All of the wastewater treatment plants are going to find that they're going to have problems with the 20 nanograms that's being proposed by US EPA, and will filter down through IEP. IEP still has to accept that limitation, and the state of Illinois has in the past given US EPA some fits with respect to accepting limitations immediately. They do typically wait a little bit, you know, maybe this is the case where they don't.
Mayor, you have a, you had a hand up before.
Comment about mercury? I was going to change the subject. Try to summarize what we're doing here.
Anyone else on the mercury?
It seems to me, and the manager pointed out to me, the acting manager, if the consensus is we're not moving the Veterans Memorial, then A2-5 is off the table, and we're back to a new version of B2-5, the original plan, which has already been approved by committee and already been approved by the city council. We may be making this more complicated than it is. I think the decision is, is moving the Veterans Memorial off the table, in which case we're back to the original plan with some tweaks to it.
But Mayor, there was no motion on the floor to remove Veterans Park at all. We still are talking about B2-5. There was a discussion-
Which is already approved.
Right. But why, but you're saying we would have to go back to-
If we're not talking about modifying the original plan, which is already approved, we're done. That decision's already been made.
Go ahead. Nixon, City Manager.
Yes, essentially, the, the last time we discussed the treatment plant was back on June 24th. On June 24th, there was some question as whether or not we could expand the plant and keep the public works building there. Now, in order to keep the public's work, public works building there, the idea was we would have to move the Veterans Memorial. Staff and the engineers were directed to go back, look and see how feasible that was, if that was an option. In the interim, the engineers were able to find a way to keep both the public works building and Veterans, Veterans Memorial onsite if we chose to expand. So essentially, we're back to where we started from, which was originally designed for the future and build the $11 million plant. So we're, we've already recommended that. So unless you want to move the Veterans Memorial, essentially, you've already made this decision.
Alman, please.
Ed, help me out here. Basically, the 800,000 we're paying regardless. The question really is, the 450,000, 415,000 are approximately extra if it's a design just Phase One?
Correct.
To finish Phase One?
Do final design and permitting for Phase One.
Right. And if we went with the full blown, then it would be an extra 700,000 because it's 1.1, you said, right?
Correct. If we-
If we went with the full, the whole thing?
Right.
With the expansion?
Yeah.
You said 1.19 million. So it's an additional 700,000 for that part of the, okay. My question is, if we do the 415,000, and we come back to engineer in a few years, maybe 10 years, who knows? It's not going to be just 700,000. It'll probably be a whole different price then, right?
Yes, it would be a different price. Don't know what it would be until we scope it out at that time.
Okay. My question is, though, in the meeting I had last week with the foreign manager and Mr. Zainer, we, Mr. Zainer mentioned, when you go for these permits, you know, IEP and whatnot, these organizations want something from the city, which, you know, I think he called them tchotchkes or something. But, you know, they want something. My question is, would it be in our best interest to think about putting in those filters now and go with the, if we go with the filters, is that part of the 415,000? Or is that number changed? If we just do the filters without the expansion?
Answering two questions. One regarding going and talking with the environmental agencies. That comes into play when you're, want to modify your NPDS permit to ask for additional capacity. Any improvements that you do to the plant that you don't ask for additional capacity, you do not have to go to the environmental agencies for approval. You just go to IEP for your construction and operations permit for those improvements.
So basically, if we go, if we don't expand the plant, and we don't put in the filters, we really don't have to go to them to get-
You can even put in the filters, but you don't have to go to the environmental groups until you want more flow.
Well, I would, you know, we'd like to have that card up our sleeve that, you know, we can, when we're negotiating, well, we're going to put in these filters.
When you're negotiating with those, the agencies, the more positive spend you can put on any activities you've done, the better position you're in. If you can do some of the improvements at the plant and show that you're reducing the load going in, that you can accept a tighter limit, reducing the mass loading that you're allowed to discharge, that's what they want to see. What, their main goal is that you don't increase your mass loading to the receiving stream so you don't degrade the quality. They say you're going to degrade the quality if you put any additional nutrient loading than what it currently sees. So that's, we use those assumptions when we anticipate what the new limits would be to come up with this design of expanding the capacity without, you know, discharging any more nutrient loading than what's going in there. That's the first thing. If you can go in and you know what they're going to ask for, they've asked for a number of places across the state. We've dealt with them, we've gotten permits from them and worked with them. Actually, in a project we did in McHenry, we actually got a letter of recommendation from those same groups because we did that. We diverted flow from one plant to another, and we, discharging now at a tighter limit. They were all for that. And so that's, if you work with them, you can get them, you know, on your side.
That's our approach. We're gonna, we're gonna be, when we go to do the plant expansion, we're going to be discharging a higher flow to Salt Creek, but it's going to be a higher quality that the total mass, the solids that's going into the river is going to be the same or less. And that's our approach to satisfy the environmental groups, is that our treatment is better, our flow is higher, but our treatment is better, and it's the same net effect into the river. And there's a precedence with that and some of the other communities that we've worked with.
That's, in essence, what happens when you deal with the environmental advocacy groups. When we did that in Itasca, we did provide, you know, a higher quality wastewater to the receiving stream, a higher quality wastewater and a higher volume. There were some additional efforts that were required of the Village of Itasca, though, to get that permit. It's not just enough to, to say that we're, you know, we're going to put in those filters. They are going to ask for some additional things. That's part of the process. It's just like going to a car salesman and buying a car. You know, they're, you're not going to walk away, you know, 30% less of, of the sticker price. You're gonna, you're gonna dicker with them, but that's the deal. You have to negotiate. And, and Ed is right. You know, the better position you put yourself into, you know, maybe it is a better position to wait and put those filters in to, you know, hey, look, this is the first thing we're going to do is put these filters in to improve the quality of our wastewater as we move forward with this. But in answer to your question, and those are the questions that you, we had discussed, what we had talked about was going the full expansion, and it is true, the environmental advocacy groups will require a higher quality effluent if you're going to have a higher volume that goes to them.
Can I follow up? But if we, let's say we design the full plant, but we don't build the expansion part of it, do we have to go back to them again after we've negotiated?
If you're not asking for increase in your flow going out, you don't have to go to negotiate with them the first time.
Oh, okay.
Okay? You only go to negotiate with the environmental groups when you want to modify your NPDS permit to discharge at a higher flow rate. And one of the carrots that we're going to use, or would use at that time, is looking at South Plant. Where our recommendation from the feasibility study is to derate that plant, reduce some of the capacity that it's allowed to discharge, and ask for more flow at this plant, you know. Those are some of the negotiating tools that you want to use at that time. And so that's, we don't want to go in and derate that plant now. We want to derate that plant when it's advantageous in negotiating with the environmental groups.
One more, one more quick comment. We agree that, we don't think that, that it makes sense to design, necessarily design the whole plant if you're not going to build it. So we, we think it's a good, we, we were advocates of designing the 30% to be able to lay it out and be able to make sure it all fits, and then it also puts us ahead of the game if, if the developers come and we have, we have a good, solid plan. So I agree that it doesn't make sense to design the whole, the, the full 37 million plant if you're only going to build 11 million. We've, we've done enough to know that, that it'll work and it'll fit onsite. So we're, we're, we've, we've only at, in January, when we're, we'll be at that point, and we'll have 30% design of the whole thing, and then we can decide, you know, which, what do you want to go to the final?
We talked about with the full-blown expansion, a, it can handle a population increase of 15,000 people. Can somebody explain that, that, how that does not necessarily mean a residential expansion of 15,000 people? I mean, we have a, we have a daily population here, a, during the day population, something higher than the 14,000 residents we have. And I remember somewhere along the way, there was some formula for the workforce population is a percentage, assumed percentage of a residential population. So I'm hoping somebody can clarify that, the way I remember it, that that 15,000 on the full expansion doesn't mean we're assuming we're doubling our residential population, but we are preparing in some way, shape, or form for an expansion of, of, of commercial activity.
From the feasibility study report that we prepared, one of the sections in there was looking at the, what flows we need to design for. And what was done was we utilized the information from the Thorndale Corridor Planning Group that you had here, and for their square footage of reduction in space of industrial, commercial, you know, the area that was going to be redeveloped, and then adding in what was coming into it. So using those square footages, we came up with the estimates of population that would be there for either permanent residents, transient residents and hotels, office workers, industrial workers. And then there's different percentages or amounts of wastewater generated per day for each of those activities. Those were then summarized, and we end up with, we need for the redevelopment, a .7 MGD increase in capacity. For the increase in capacity based on CMAP's population projections for Wooddale, we need a .12 MGD expansion. And then we want to have, make sure that we're not at that 80% level, so we have 25% extra capacity at that point, so that you have, you know, additional things that you don't know about now can occur. And then we end up with a, you know, the capacity that we need. And that was how those were determined.
Okay, but to help put us in, put things into perspective here, two questions for you. First, does anybody in this room know what our daylight hour population is? Forty? 40,000, which is a big difference than the 14,000 residents. Now, I know that each one of those additional, you know, 25,000 or 26,000 does not equate to a full, whole number, right?
Well, the population projections that were used, the current-
I'm not talking projections, I, what's, daily, right now what we have, so.
Residential population, 13,509. Employment population, 26,356. The projected 20, 30 population that was used for design, 13,869 for residential.
So not a big difference.
Employment of 29,273.
Okay. And those numbers came from CMAP?
Those numbers came from CMAP and from your planning group for the redevelopment.
And whether we, whether we think those numbers are realistic or not, how, how dedicated is this process to having to follow at least the CMAP's part of, of the projection? If, it's my understanding that if we, if we veer from that, that we have to have a darn good reason. Is that correct, or am I, am I oversimplifying that?
As part of the wastewater treatment plant expansion, or your capacity expansion to get your NPDS permit, you first have to modify your facility plan, where you put in there what your populations are, or your projections are, what you're basing your design on. That goes to CMAP for review and approval. They're the ones who approve that and tell IEP that these, you know, numbers are the ones that are correct. If you vary significantly from CMAP's number, which we are varying some from the numbers, but the planning process demonstrates why we think we're going to vary there, because that is what's planned for this corridor, that's what's coming in.
Yeah.
So that is a higher number than what CMAP says you should be planning for. They will accept that because you have, you know, good justification for that. If you pull the number out of the air, when we started looking at this way back, it was, we want a 5 MGD expansion at North.
But, but I guess I'm going in the opposite direction. What if we say we don't want any expansion, we don't need any expansion, we're landlocked, it's never going to happen, but CMAP's saying, no, our projections, and we're the professionals who are paid to come up with these projections, disagree with you. I guess that's, that's the argument. I want to know, how do we make it if, if that's the council's desire in, in, in January to have no expansion? And I guess we're okay right now with our percentages, although we're tight. And where does that, where does that put us in five or 10 years? So I guess I'm just saying, if we don't, if we don't follow those projections at some point in the future, what are the repercussions, if any?
CMAP says that your population increase is going to be 360 people. They're saying pretty much that you're not going to expand a lot in base population.
Right. Thank you. But, but that we are going to see a couple thousand in, in business?
From the, the Thorndale Corridor redevelopment?
Excluding that, because CMAP doesn't put, doesn't take that into account.
Correct. Oh, CMAP's dry weather flow projections, actually, CMAP's projecting to 2,917 employees and 360 residential.
So about another, it's okay, about another 3,000 employees and 300 residential.
Yeah. Those were CMAP's numbers.
And can those, and can those numbers be sustained with our current capacity?
Functional capacity or permit capacity?
Whichever we have at the end of an $11 million Band-Aid. Whichever we have at the end of the $11 million-
At the end of the $11 million Band-Aid, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. That's a, I think that was a huge question.
At that one-
Have the answer for.
Your functional capacity would increase to reflect, you know, your 78% loading.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Any other questions at all?
Basically, here, are we trying to decide if we're going to go with the, the extra 415,000 or the 1.1 million? Is that, is that what we're doing here, or?
I don't know that we need to make that decision right now. We, we can make that in January, or we can make it now.
Can I follow up?
Sure.
So basically, everybody's in agreement, I think, that we want at least the $11 million taken care of. I think we got financial questions that we'll probably have to put on another committee on some of the numbers of what it costs residents and whatnot, because I've been doing some of my own figures, and it's come to light that we're putting away a million dollars, basically, a year into our sewer fund, which I've been discussing with our finance director there. So the bottom line is, if we're not going to start, if we're going to start, if we're basically charging the people for the expansion, we better start thinking about reducing those water rates, because we're, we're accumulating some nice money in that sewer fund, which I believe I asked at budget, and I go, no, and I was told, no, it's part of the equipment and depreciation. I, I know Mr. Wilson's been, because I've been drilling him on that, he goes, oh, I'll get you a definite answer. I think we're going to have to-
We aren't going to get into it.
No, we're not going to get into it. We're going to have to, separate meeting on the, the money part of this thing here. Okay.
I think that the direction that we are going to give them is, it, it looks like the census is go for the $11 million.
Yeah, I guess the main thing is, is if we continue our-
But to fill 800K full of design.
Yeah.
That's the direction.
Okay.
I'm going to make that motion.
And then I guess we, we'd like some buy-in, I guess, that, that, you know, whether we do Phase One or Phase Two, that, that we're leaving Memorial Park here, that we can start designing with this treatment unit, this clarifier being there.
The Veteran, the Veteran Park is, my sense is from this council that it stays in place.
Okay.
And are we all in favor of that?
Yes.
Assistant C-Manager.
Again, again, why we are here tonight is because on the June 24th committee meeting, you asked for information about moving Veterans Park.
Right.
Since then, it's no longer necessary to do that. So we don't have to come to any decisions until January. That was the original plan. But you requested that we come back with this information, which we did. So essentially, we can leave tonight without making any motions.
Okay.
We don't have to make motions tonight.
Mayor Johnson? However, the last committee report was to adopt alternate A2-5.
Right.
So just to clarify the record where we're at today, I think we, the committee should recommend withdraw its support for A2.5.
We didn't have support for that.
Which is removing the Veterans Park.
Would like one minor clarification.
Hang on one second. I believe, what meeting was that, Mayor?
That would be the meeting of June 24th, 2010.
No, there was no motion on the floor. There was no decision as a full council, a committee to go forward.
Correct. At, well, at committee, yes. You weren't present, you were in Wisconsin.
But it never made it to council.
Correct. But the current recommendation of the committee is alternate A2-5.
There was no motion in committee. There was a discussion, but there was no motion on the floor to consider to, it was a consensus. It wasn't to go forward. There had the motion on the floor.
Maybe wrong. My understanding in committee, it did pass, and it never came back to council.
Jeff, was this a consensus?
My rec, my recollection was that the committee asked for information on a hypothetical 8.25, and once you got that information, you would then make the recommendation to the council for approval. But I believe it was always a B2-5 or B5, whatever you want to call it. But A2-5 was never formally adopted by anybody other than the committee requesting information.
Right.
That's it.
We've spent a lot of time here, we've got a lot of the key players here tonight. What are we afraid of making a recommendation out of this committee tonight? I like that plan. I like the way the full expansion lays out, and I like that we're seeing something that we haven't seen as an entire group before, with that clarifier location and showing how we could stop at the $11 million fix, or we could take it to the 38, $7 million full bill out for full expansion in the future. I think we've gotten really far. We're not moving public works building, we're not moving the, the Memorial Park, and, and we've got the flexibility of a preliminary design. I'm really concerned that, I'm feeling some resistance here to, to make a motion and make a solid recommendation out of committee for, for at least direction for staff and, and for the consultants to know how to move forward with this thing. Then, in that case, yeah, I'll just make the motion that, that we have a recommendation to, to continue with, with the Phase One and Phase Two 30% preliminary plans, as is contracted, I believe, for the $800,000, and to come back in January and make some future decisions on which plan we're going to move forward with and how we're going to finance it. That's my motion.
Second.
I have a, a motion, I have a second. Question.
Who's first?
Jeff.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I'm under the impression that you've already done that.
We've-
You've already done that.
800,000.
Yes.
We voted on it.
Right. 800,000 is already committed to this budget.
Or 11, or 11 streets. Alman, New Zealand, please.
We voted on the 800,000. That was done. The bottom line is, are we going to go with the full treatment plant, or, or the $11 million, or the $11 million with the filters? And again, we have, we're going to have to have that finance discussion meeting to decide where we're going to go with that. And we've got until January to figure that out. So I'm hoping, Aldrin Winger, if we can put that on one of the finance committee meetings, so we can get that out in the open. That's where the problem is here.
Okay.
We may be at 800,000.
Alman Roy Wesley.
Okay. Last week, I, last week I met with Jeff in his office. Jeff, what are you looking for? That's the bottom line, and let's go, this is, this is getting ridiculous now.
We've already signed the $800,000 contract to engineer up to a certain point for the expanded plant and for the baseline plant, okay? We haven't reached the January deadline yet to have to make another decision. Like I said before, the only reason we were here tonight was because of that Veterans Memorial. So now, since that has been eliminated, as far as having to move that, we don't need any further decisions tonight.
So, so my-
You can make one if you, if you like, but I mean-
So my point is, let Jeff do his job. He, he'll bring it to us when, when we're ready to make the decision of 11 million or 37 million, whatever we want to do. This is going on too long.
We wouldn't have been in this predicament if everyone didn't talk about moving Veterans Park. Alman, Del.
Two things. First, I thought it was appropriate to make the motion tonight, because although we've made motions before and approved things at council level, we're still questioning why we're spending $800,000. I'm not saying they're not good questions, but we're way past that. So that's why I wanted to confirm tonight. Additionally, I think I have to amend, or at least clarify, my motion. There are two Phase Twos in this package. I think I did state the Phase One and Phase Two that do not move Veteran Memorial Park or, or the Public Works Building, because what I have in front of me is two Phase Two alternate Cs, and they're very different plans from each other. I think they're just maybe mislabeled, or I'm reading it wrong. But I just want to make my motion clear, and to see if the secondor agrees, that it's the plan that does not move Memorial Park, the plan that we're looking at right there, not that plan.
Not that plan.
Yes, this is the one that we would like to keep proceeding with on our preliminary design.
The mayor brought it to my attention that this was labeled like that, so I want to make sure that clarification was-
So we're going, so is, is the motioner wants to change his motion, does the secondary agree?
Yes.
Okay. All in faith. Any other question?
That should be, that should be. Actually, we're concluding the primary design for this, that this is included within.
Right. That's already included. We included, and then the other one. All right. So we have a secondary, we have a second on the motion, we'll throw a roll call vote on this one.
Wait.
Question.
Jeff, you feel comfortable with this? You want this council to wait?
I'm under the impression that the contract has already been signed with... With to be, it's already been signed. All that changed was there's no more talk of moving the Veterans Memorial. Again, I reiterate.
So why are we voting?
Because there's a motion on the floor, there's a second on the motion.
We already voted on this.
Mayor Johnson.
Point of order, sorry. But isn't the contract that was signed to a...
We need to revisit that. That's going to be my...
And I take it Smith Engineering has no objection to modifying the existing signed contract to Alderman Caddell's motion?
We have no objection to that.
Case closed. Alderman Caddell.
Something big really went down here tonight before we started our committee meeting. That's another reason I want this to be a motion at committee and to go back to council for exactly what the mayor said, that, okay, we can talk about changing that contract, but let's make it official. What's the big deal at this point? Let's fix it. It was wrong, let's fix it. And as a group, as a committee, we still haven't seen that plan. That's another reason I wanted this motion out there tonight. We knew, big picture, that we were looking for a design that could do multiple phases. We hadn't seen it yet. That's where I'm going with this, guys.
That was a new one. So we have a motion, we have a second, on a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Lewitin.
Yes.
Alderman Roy Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Police.
Yes.
Alderman Caddella.
Yes.
Alderman Eugene Wesley.
Yes.
Alderman Winger.
Yes.
Alderman Chocky.
All right. Items considered future meetings. Primary engineer drainage of road construction on Forest View, Oakwood, Edgewood, and Harvey. Any idea when that may be done? Do we have any... Our C engineer know about that?
We'll get you a date in November at our next committee meeting, or December.
C Y Drainage Solution, Swale Filth, when's that coming?
We'll provide you a date for all the upcoming items at the next committee meeting.
Enforcement of removal of sump pump connection sanitation center, consideration of tall oak detention basin maintenance agreement. I would like to add in the next committee meeting, please.
That's illegal right now.
It's illegal right now, so we're moving forward, that's good. Replace of silver maple trees on Parkway. Potential petition for sidewalk on Edgewood. So are any other items that want to be added on to this agenda? Alderman Caddell.
Not to add on, but just to be fair, I hammered Chairman Winger, and you already brought it up, but I just want to respectfully, yet assertively, remind everybody that I'd really like to assign some level of importance to this Harvey, Forest View, Edgewood, Oakwood engineering situation, particularly considering the preliminary field survey has been done for several months. So I don't want that... Personally, I think that the longer a study starts to collect dust, the more we all begin to forget about it. So I just wanted to go on record as thanking you for asking for a date, but to remind everybody that I think it's very important. Thank you.
Any other items? I will make a motion adjourned.
Second.
On favor?
All right.
All right, motion carried. Thanks, guys.